Gracias, señor presidente. Buen día, señor presidente y señorías. Es un placer finalmente venir y hablar contigo sobre la violencia de las familias en nuestra comunidad. La presentación de hoy es una resumen de la violencia de las familias en Lodi, junto con un resumen de lo que el departamento de policía está haciendo en este momento y algunos de nuestros planes para que vengan. Antes de empezar, hay algunas personas en el público que me gustaría presentar. Empecemos con el capitán JP Bedell, que es el comandante de servicios y operaciones. El teniente Chris Piambo, que es el responsable de nuestra división de investigaciones en la unidad de la violencia. El sargento Bill Alexander, que es nuestro experto en la violencia y es responsable de la unidad especial de investigaciones. El Sr. Steve Dutcher, del departamento de saneamiento de Parks y Recos. Tiene un interés especial en la actividad de la violencia en la ciudad. Y especialmente, los invitados que vinieron de Stockton para nosotros hoy, el Sr. Ralph Womack. Ralph es un capitán de policía retirado de la policía de Stockton y actualmente es el coordinador de la operación Peacemaker en Stockton. Así que estoy muy, muy contento de que Ralph pudiera acompañarnos hoy. Tengo una presentación que tener que pasar y luego, cuando terminemos esto, estoy seguro de que tendrás preguntas. Entre mí y los miembros del público que están aquí para apoyarme, estoy seguro de que podemos responder tus preocupaciones. No voy a entrar en muchos detalles sobre las familias en Lodi, pero quiero darles una resumen. Generalmente, tenemos una rivalidad tipo Norteño-Serano aquí en Lodi. A partir de ahora, tenemos 249 miembros validados y asociados de la violencia en la ciudad. Estas son personas que han pasado por un criterio que usamos basado en estándares establecidos por el Departamento de Justicia estatal para determinar si alguien es un miembro de una familia o un asociado de una familia. Las familias aquí en Lodi son típicamente territoriales, lo que significa que tienen cierto terreno que protegen. Y aquí, típicamente, a la izquierda de la Avenida Lodi está el lado Norteño. A la derecha de la Avenida Lodi está el lado Serano, y obviamente estamos hablando del lado oeste de la ciudad. También vemos algunos intercambios de la comunidad. No es inusual que veamos a miembros de la violencia que viven en Woodbridge, Thornton, Galt, Stockton, involucrándose en actividades aquí en Lodi. También quiero señalar que las familias son un problema de la comunidad. Esto no es solo un problema de la policía, sino que es algo que afecta a toda la comunidad. Y realmente va a tomar toda la comunidad para unirse para hacer algo al respecto. Y realmente empieza en el hogar, con el parroquial. Y para sacar una línea de Luther King, yo creo fuertemente que tolerar la violencia de las familias en cualquier parte de nuestra comunidad es aceptarlo en todas partes. Porque aunque sucede principalmente en una zona de la ciudad, voy a mostrarle dónde se extiende hasta toda nuestra comunidad. Lo que estás viendo aquí es una mapas de pin que muestra incidentes relacionados con la violencia que ocurrieron en 2010. Y primero tengo que decirte unas palabras sobre nuestras estadísticas. No comenzamos a vigilar la actividad de la violencia hasta mediados de 2009, cuando actualizamos nuestro software de envío y reporte. Así que 2010 es realmente la primera vez que tenemos datos disponibles que nos dan una especie de reflejo exacto de lo que está pasando aquí. Lo que estás viendo en la pim map es la actividad de la violencia, que incluye incidentes que son en realidad crímenes, así como incidentes que no subieron al nivel de un crimen. Así que grabamos 202 de ellos en 2010. Estoy razonablemente seguro de la precisión de esto, pero no son datos del 100%, pero es lo mejor que tenemos disponible. Y creo que hace un buen trabajo dando una representación visual de la actividad de la violencia en la ciudad. Como puedes ver, la mayoría de ellos ocurren, ha ocurrido en el oeste de Lodi, pero también se extiende a otras partes de la comunidad. Así que comparamos eso con 2011. Vimos 253 informes, lo que fue un aumento del 25% en comparación con 2010. Y una de las cosas preocupantes que quería traer a tu atención es que el 11% de nuestros crímenes de la violencia en realidad ocurrió en campus de escuelas medias y secundarias. El 11% de esa actividad ocurrió en sitios escolares. Vamos a mostrarlo de otra forma. Aquí lo graficamos. Empecé a centrar tu atención con la línea verde. Estamos mirando los años calendarios de 2010, 2011, principalmente. Y puedes ver la línea verde siguiendo hasta mayo. Vimos un picante el año pasado. Y como típicamente vemos aquí en Lodi, veremos un picante en el verano cuando la escuela se desplaza. Y luego lanzaremos recursos adicionales al problema. Lanzaremos la red de la comunidad. Vamos a buscar a las personas que causan los problemas. Y luego veremos un declive. Y ves que se refleja en junio. Luego comenzó a volver a subir un poco en julio, agosto, septiembre, y luego se retorce en el verano, mientras las cosas se derrumban. Nuestra respuesta típica ha sido saturar una área, devolver recursos adicionales al problema a una base de corto plazo. Pasando a la línea roja, que representa 2011. Ves un aumento constante hasta junio. En ese punto, se pusieron muchos recursos adicionales al problema. Y lo suprimimos bastante mientras avanzábamos a julio. Y luego, a medida que llegó agosto, comenzamos a verlo subir de nuevo. Al principio de agosto, experimentamos nuestro primer homicidio del año, lo que hablaremos un poco más en un momento. Y parecía que como resultado de ese homicidio y el aftermath, las cosas iban a subir. Así que ahí es cuando comenzamos a cambiar nuestra estrategia un poco. Sigues la línea roja hasta el final del año, las cosas se retorceron. Y luego la línea azul representa los primeros dos meses de 2012. Como puedes ver, febrero en realidad superó el febrero de los últimos dos años en cuanto a la actividad que grabamos. Quiero enfocarme un poco en las pistolas. Grabamos, pudimos grabar nuestros incidentes que involucran armas. Y en 2010, vimos 12 incidentes relacionados con las pistolas. Quiero decir, si lo averageas, obviamente es uno al mes. Aquí es bastante concentrado en una área en particular de la ciudad, en el lado oeste. Pasando a 2011, teníamos 21 incidentes involucrados en las pistolas, lo que fue un aumento del 75% de 2010. Verás uno en el lado norte oeste de la ciudad. Ese es en realidad un incidente relacionado con la violencia y la droga que ocurrió en Redledge el verano pasado.
Permítame parar por un segundo. Vuelve a esa diapositiva, por favor. ¿Tendremos algún sentido de dónde están obteniendo estas armas? ¿Quieren que se recuperen? ¿Son la mayoría de ellas, habiendo sido reportadas, robadas? ¿Están comprando ellas? ¿Tenemos un sentido de eso?
Vamos a tener al sargento Alexander venir a la conferencia y luego...
La mayoría están...
Sí, necesitas venir al podium.
Buenos días. La mayoría de ellas están siendo tomadas en residencia burglarias, ya sea en la ciudad o en el condado. Estamos encontrándolas y trazandolas de vuelta a víctimas de diferentes crímenes.
¿Y sabemos si son tomadas en residencias burglarias? ¿Sabemos si están encontrando armas que están cargadas?
¿Quieres decir cómo obtienen su munición? La mayoría de las veces son tomadas en las burglarías mismas. Tendrán algunas pistolas que son tomadas en vehículos. La gente las deja en sus autos. Pero por la mayor parte, son tomadas de sus casas.
Pasemos a hablar de homicidas. Mirando hasta 2010 hasta 2012 hasta ahora, hemos tenido cuatro. Ahora, ves cinco estrellas en la mapa. Una de esas, la que está en la parte más lejos, en la sección más baja de la mapa, no es un homicidio. Se categoriza como un intento de homicidio. Esta es una mapa computada. Y no nos permite quitar eso porque fue un intento. Pero en resumen, vimos no homicidios, no homicidios relacionados con la violencia en 2010. Dos en 2011. Y luego dos hasta ahora, hasta hoy, en 2012. Y de nuevo, puedes ver dónde están ocurriendo. Te daré un pequeño resumen de esos homicidios. El 6 de agosto, en el 500º block de el norte. Ese incidente sigue siendo investigado. El 16 de noviembre, en Pine and Central. Hemos identificado a un sospecho que es un adulto. Estamos tratando de aprehenderlo. El 9 de febrero, en el floor central. Arrasamos a un sospecho de 16 años. Un oficial en realidad estaba presente cuando eso sucedió y pudo llevar a la persona a la custodia. Y luego, más recientemente, el 10 de marzo, frente a la 9 South Garfield. Un 18 años, verdaderamente una víctima inocente, Angelica Osorio, fue asesinada y muerta. Su novio resultó herido. Y hemos tomado a un sospecho de 17 años en la custodia en eso. El tema común aquí es que cada uno de estos incidentes involucra una pistola. Y mientras estoy en esta diapositiva, solo quiero tomarme un momento para homenajear el trabajo de nuestros amigos en el departamento de policía, tanto en investigaciones como en vigilancia. Han sido capaces de lanzar muchos recursos a estos crímenes muy serios. Y como resultado, hemos tenido los arrestos que están mostrando en la pantalla. Así que quiero agradecerlos y homenajearles por el trabajo que han hecho. Estos no son crímenes fáciles de resolver porque estás lidiando con víctimas y sospechosos que no están completamente cooperativos con la policía cuando se trata de investigarlos. Eso es una especie de imagen de cómo nuestra situación se ve en una captura de fotograma. Así que voy a entrar un poco en la estrategia de las familias. Y lo que creo que son algunas cosas efectivas que son parte de una estrategia de la violencia. Esto es algo que he inventado. Estas son las cosas que otras comunidades que han tenido mucho éxito han usado para lidiar con la violencia de las familias. Una vez más, reconociendo que esto es un problema de la comunidad, no solo un problema de la policía, y que afecta a toda la comunidad. Necesitamos llegar a términos que no podemos arrestar para salir de ello. Cuando ponemos a alguien en la cárcel, tomamos a alguien a la custodia, la mayoría de las veces van a salir. Mientras están lejos, típicamente se vuelven peores criminales que cuando entraron. Especialmente los offenders de primera o segunda vez. Y como hablaremos un poco en algunas diapositivas a venir, las tasas de residuenza son tan altas que mientras las personas vuelven, probablemente van a cometer otro crimen y vuelvan a entrar. Así que arrestar para salir del problema no es feasible. Las comunidades que han tenido el mayor éxito con la violencia de las familias incluyen una mezcla o una combinación de estrategias para reducirlo, que incluye la aplicación de la ley, la supresión, programas de intervención y prevención. Y realmente quiero enfocarme, y verás este término "prácticas mejores y programas basados en la evidencia", muchas veces en la presentación. Realmente queremos enfocarnos en cosas que funcionan, cosas que han demostrado en otras comunidades ser efectivas. No tenemos tiempo para desperdiciar. Necesitamos seguir adelante con programas que sean basados en la evidencia y sabemos que van a ser exitosos. Lo bueno es que tenemos muchos recursos disponibles para nosotros en cuanto a comunidades que han pasado por esto y que han tenido muchos grandes éxitos con esto. Así que tenemos muchos lugares para regresar. Tenemos lugares donde podemos ir para obtener información de lo que va a ser más efectivo para Lodi. Ejemplos de esos incluyen Stockton, Salinas, Fresno y Monrovia. La ciudad de Monrovia acaba de recibir una premiación nacional la semana pasada por su trabajo en la violencia de las familias.
En términos de que no puedes arrestar para salir de ello, ¿no encuentras que...? Sargento Alexander, ¿no encuentras que realmente no hay un verdadero miedo de ser arrestado por estos individuos? No es un detergente.
Lo que estamos encontrando es que ahora hay menos miedo debido al impacto en las cárceles del condado. La tasa de cambio es muy rápida. Por ejemplo, si tienes a un paroli y está violado, solían poder quedarse en prisión durante un año. Pero ahora saben que es como una cuota de 90 días. Están ahí, están allá, no les importa. Y te dirán que no les importa. Así que saben que a menos que comiencen un crimen muy heinous, salen muy rápido. Así que la puerta revolvente gira mucho más rápido ahora mismo cuando estamos obteniendo a nuestros criminales de vuelta en la calle.
Lo mismo con Chugamahal?
Por la mayor parte, sí. No están tan afectados por el programa de paroli que pone a los parolis en el condado tanto. Pero es lo mismo. Todavía hay una puerta revolvente y gira más rápido cuando ellos salen.
Así que, ¿cuáles son nuestros objetivos? Son bastante simples. Queremos reducir la violencia de las familias en Lodi. Queremos tratar de ayudar a las personas a salir de la vida de la violencia. Y queremos tratar de desencorajar a otros de unirse a la violencia. ¿Cómo vamos a llegar there? Nuestros objetivos son desmantelar, alterar y desplazar las familias. Lo harán con una combinación o una mezcla de aplicación de la ley, de intervención y prevención. Y una vez más, nos enfocaremos en las prácticas mejores y programas basados en la evidencia para ayudarnos a lograr esto. Un investigador me dijo una vez, y lo dijo en términos muy claros, que los miembros de la violencia aman quién son. Aman todo sobre el estilo de vida de la violencia. Aman lo que hacen, aman ser parte de ello. Y para hacerlos cambiar es bastante difícil. Así que una vez que están ahí, es realmente difícil tener un impacto en ellos. Nuestro mensaje que hemos estado entregando a estos individuos desde el verano pasado, el verano pasado, es bastante claro. Tienen tres opciones. Número uno, pueden dejar la vida de la violencia. Si toman esa elección, y esa es la elección que queremos que tomen, haremos todo lo que podemos para ayudarlos. Si eso significa conseguir una educación de educación primaria, habilidades de educación, licencia de conductor. Hay recursos disponibles que podemos dirigir a esos individuos para ayudarlos a ser exitosos. La segunda opción sería dejar Lodi. No son bienvenidos aquí. Si no eligen el número uno o dos, la tercera opción es ir a la cárcel. Y si eligen esa elección, el departamento de policía de Lodi va a usar todos los recursos disponibles a su disposición para asegurarse de que eso suceda. Hablamos un poco de lo que estamos haciendo ahora. La violencia de las familias es un enfoque principal en el departamento de policía. El verano pasado, expandimos nuestra unidad especial de investigaciones, que era en ese momento un personal de un sargento y cuatro investigadores. Agregamos dos más investigadores a esa unidad, ambos de habla española. Ahora, eso nos da un personal de un sargento y seis oficiales. Pero quiero enfatizar que esa es una unidad que no solo trabaja con la violencia de las familias, sino que también es nuestra unidad de narcotraficante, nuestra unidad vice, nuestra unidad que maneja el traficante humano y una variedad de otras cosas que se encuentran en la oficina del departamento de policía. Así que son mezclados en cuanto a lo que hacen. El análisis de crímenes es muy importante. Y no estábamos haciendo mucho en cuanto a mirar los datos que entran, mirar los casos que entran, mirar los tiempos de las ocurrencias, los lugares de las ocurrencias, e intentar combinar los rompecabezas. Así que regresamos a un retirado. El sargento Dale Miller regresó el verano pasado y está trabajando como analista de crímenes para nosotros. Él es capaz de acceder a nuestra información en nuestro sistema de despacho, nuestro sistema de reporte, y es capaz de mirar y realmente llegar a los detalles sobre lo que está pasando con el crimen. Y de hecho, las mapas que te mostré en los gráficos son un producto de lo que el sargento Miller ha hecho. Así que el análisis de crímenes es un componente muy importante de lo que estamos tratando de hacer para lograr algunos resultados aquí. La vigilancia obviamente tiene una participación clave. No solo necesitamos herramientas investigativas fuertes, sino que necesitamos ser proactivos en la vigilancia. Necesitamos oficiales que van a salir y involucrar a los offenders y tomar acción. Nosotros nos enfocamos en los más prolíficos, los más peores miembros de la violencia que causan la mayor cantidad de problemas. Y eso es parte de lo que hace el análisis de crímenes también, es tratar de averiguar quiénes son los peores. Quiénes son los que están involucrados en la mayor cantidad de crímenes. Y dónde lo están haciendo. ¿Cuáles son los puntos calientes? Allí es donde necesitamos emplear nuestros recursos en lugar de simplemente cubrir la comunidad o cubrir la comunidad con vigilantes adicionales. El compartir información en tiempo correcto. Es una cuestión de tomar esa información analítica y empujarla hacia la organización para que tan rápido como sea podemos conseguirlo en el BDC. Cuando ese oficial llegue a trabajar, sabe lo que está pasando en la comunidad y sabe que puede enfocar su atención en esos problemas.
Antes de continuar, sabes, creo que ese compartir de información es muy importante. Y sé que tú y yo hemos hablado de esto antes, en que si puedes identificar dónde esta actividad está ocurriendo. Y todos sabemos que los propietarios de la propiedad son responsables por la permiso de la actividad criminal en su propiedad. ¿Y estamos enviando avisos a la codeenfuerza para que puedan notificar a los propietarios de la propiedad que esta actividad criminal está ocurriendo en su propiedad y que es en contra del derecho para que lo permitan continuar?
Señor presidente, me alegro de que haya mencionado eso. Y en realidad voy a cubrir algo de eso un poco más tarde. Hemos trabajado con los propietarios de la propiedad y eres absolutamente correcto. Nosotros nos enfocamos en los propietarios de la propiedad que tienen alquileres, que son miembros de la violencia, que son una nuisance para la comunidad. Hemos tenido mucha suerte hasta ahora con notificar a esos propietarios de la propiedad e identificar el problema con ellos y hacerlos tomar acción por su cuenta, sin iniciarse la acción de la codeenfuerza. Y no sé si el personal tiene ejemplos de ocasiones en las que hemos tenido que usar cierta codeenfuerza fuerte en una propiedad. Hasta ahora, hemos tenido muy buenos resultados trabajando con ellos en lugar de iniciar la acción de la enfoque en realidad.
Lo aprecio. Sé por el hecho que el primer crimen que tuvo lugar fue por la calle de mi casa. Y eso había sido un problema en un complejo de apartamentos por más de un año y medio. Y cuando esto sucedió, no estoy segura de lo que tu departamento hizo para llegar a ese propietario de la propiedad, pero pusieron fentbras, golpearon casi todo el complejo. Tienes que tener llaves ahora para entrar a la propiedad para que alguien no pueda entrar en el west gate y hacer lo que hicieron el 6 de agosto. Lo aprecio el esfuerzo que el departamento está haciendo y creo que está mejorando al menos algunos de esos puntos calientes.
Enfoque de misión. Queremos ser específicos en lo que hacemos y dónde lo hacemos. Y la comunicación de la comunidad. Y me arrepiento si no mencionara Lodi, identificando el distrito escolar. Y especialmente, María Sarantes, la principal de la escuela de heritage. Cuando las cosas se calentaron en agosto, María nos llamó, nos pidió que participara en una reunión de la comunidad. Un miembro del consejo Johnson, que era el presidente en ese momento, participó también. Llenamos la sala de multiusos. Hay personas en la comunidad que están preocupadas y que quieren hacer algo sobre los problemas y que quieren proteger a sus hijos de unirse a la violencia de la familia. Así que es muy importante que tengamos esas relaciones con la comunidad. Y desde entonces, sé que hemos regresado a la escuela de heritage al menos una vez más, reuniendo con los padres e intentando obtener información de los padres sobre qué buscar para identificar a su hijo y ver si su hijo está involucrado en la violencia.
Tengo una pregunta sobre eso. ¿Cuánto esfuerzo hacemos? Dile a nosotros que identificas quiénes son los miembros de la violencia. Tienes una idea bastante buena de quiénes son los peores offenders. Así que, ¿qué tipo de esfuerzo hacemos al hablar con los padres? No hay duda en mi mente, hablas con los padres que realmente no se preocupan, pero estoy seguro de que encontrarás algunos que sí. ¿Estamos haciendo mucho de eso?
Sí, lo hacemos. Una de las cosas que hace el distrito escolar es que en realidad pondrán a los niños en un contrato de la violencia. Cuando un niño está involucrado o identificado como involucrado en la violencia, iniciarán, incluso a través de nuestros RROs, contacto con los padres para poner al niño básicamente en un contrato de comportamiento debido a su involución con las familias. ¿Podemos hacer más? Por supuesto. Pero sí, estamos llegando a los padres cuando es apropiado, cuando podemos. Así que, ¿qué sigue? Vamos a continuar con algunos de los pasos que hemos tomado. Los datos y la inteligencia impulsados significa que necesitamos expandir esa capacidad para aprender quiénes son los miembros de las familias, determinar quién está causando los problemas, determinar quién está disparando. Realmente, volver a entrar en los detalles de lo que está pasando en la familia. Eso requiere tiempo. Nuestros dos investigadores de la violencia que se unieron al equipo en el verano han hecho muchos esfuerzos con eso. Pero requiere tiempo para desarrollar esas relaciones con las personas, no solo en las familias, sino dentro de la comunidad y averiguar quiénes son las personas con las que realmente necesitamos enfocarnos. Una vez más, en lugar de bajar un palo de arena alrededor de la comunidad, queremos ir con un enfoque más surgical para averiguar quiénes son los problemas y luego trabajar en ellos. Necesitamos estar enfocados en sacar pistolas de las calles, mantener pistolas de no estar en las calles, y luego, una vez más, en los peores offenders.
Señor presidente, una interrupción, por favor. Creo que tú y yo hablamos una o dos semanas atrás sobre este conjunto de datos y inteligencia. ¿Podría elaboraros brevemente sobre las interrelaciones que tienes entre el departamento de la policía de la guardia, donde sé que tienen un problema con la violencia, la ciudad de Stockton ciertamente tiene un problema con la violencia? Y en nuestra conversación hablaste de cómo estás tratando de compartir datos más efectivamente. ¿Podría ser más breve?
Los oficiales de diferentes jurisdicciones interactúan bastante a menudo. Tenemos, nuestros investigadores de la violencia tienen contrapartes, tienen colegas del departamento de la policía de la guardia y del departamento de policía de Stockton, del departamento de policía de Galt, Elt Grove. Hay una red, si se quiere, de investigadores que comparten información. Había mencionado el análisis de crímenes. Y una de las cosas que el sargento Miller hizo cuando comenzó a trabajar aquí fue que llamó a las otras comunidades. Llamó a su contraparte del departamento de la policía de la guardia, un analista de crímenes en tiempo completo allí. Llamó a su contraparte del departamento de policía de Stockton. Ellos comparten frecuentemente información sobre las tendencias y eventos que están ocurriendo en cuanto a la actividad de la violencia. Y voy a hablar un poco sobre una oportunidad de fuerza de tarea en unos momentos. Y elaboraré sobre eso un poco. Sí, interactuamos con otras agencias. Tenemos compromisos de otras agencias que están dispuestas a venir y ayudarnos si necesitamos, si necesitamos la aplicación de la enfoque y demás. Tenemos compromisos muy fuertes de nuestras agencias asignadas. Injuncciones de la violencia. Desde que vemos una relación territorial con las familias aquí en Lodi, una de las cosas que vamos a estar tomando un mirada muy, muy cerca es la idea de una injuncción de la violencia, que en esencia, nosotros, la ciudad, vamos a la corte y obtenemos una relajación injuncional contra personas que se identifican como miembros de la violencia. Y podemos tomar remedios civiles con eso. Es un proceso muy largo y llevado a cabo. Puede tomar un año para montarlo. Pero aún así, en algunas ciudades que lo han hecho de la manera correcta, ha sido un instrumento muy efectivo. Señor presidente, mencionaste la codeenfuerza. Obviamente, la codeenfuerza es un asunto significativo. Afortunadamente, hemos tenido buenos resultados con nuestros propietarios de la propiedad hasta ahora. Y si en el caso de que no lo hagamos, tenemos ese instrumento disponible donde podemos lidiar con esos problemas. Lodi Area Crime Stoppers. Esta es una organización, una de nuestras compañeras, que está muy preocupada por lo que está pasando en la comunidad. Muchísimo quiere venir a la mesa y apoyarnos. Esta es una entidad que va a ser clave, creo, especialmente cuando entramos en las escuelas con obtener información que entra en el departamento de policía para identificar a los offenders y para que los estudiantes nos digan cuáles de sus contrapartes están involucrados en el crimen de la violencia y quiénes son las personas que estamos buscando y dónde podemos encontrarlos. Así que trabajaremos más con los Crime Stoppers en el futuro. También necesitamos...
Antes de continuar, lo aprecio. Crime Stoppers, creo que es clave, porque desde mi perspectiva y hablando con todos los vecinos que, por supuesto, están en mi comunidad y han sido afectados por al menos tres de estos, porque todos han estado dentro de dos bloques de mi casa. Así que los vecinos de esa área cercana me han llamado para preguntar qué está haciendo la ciudad. Y constantemente les estoy diciendo si vieron algo. Y lo que necesitamos saber es lo que han visto. Están temerosos a la muerte. La mayoría de ellos son seniores. Una buena parte de ellos no hablan inglés. Están temerosos y temen salir de sus casas. Y la última cosa que van a hacer es identificar a alguien. Así que, ¿cómo hace el Crime Stoppers transmitir la palabra que puedes hacer informes anónimos? Y creo que eso va a ser clave en hacer que los vecinos y las comunidades se levanten y participen en este proceso. Porque, francamente, están temerosos.
Estoy de acuerdo. Y lo sabemos. Y eso es parte del trabajo que están haciendo nuestros dos nuevos investigadores de la violencia es desarrollar esas relaciones, no solo dentro de la comunidad de la violencia, sino dentro de la comunidad. Así que podemos establecer un nivel de confianza con la comunidad. Y las personas vendrán y nos dejarán saber qué está pasando. En realidad hemos sido exitosos en resolver crímenes como resultado de eso ya. Pero, de nuevo, requiere tiempo. Crime Stoppers, sabes, ser capaz de abordar ese隔阂 donde las personas confiarán en los Crime Stoppers, confiarán en que puedan llamar ese número, puedan ser verdaderamente anónimos en hacer el informe. De nuevo, va a tomar un poco de tiempo. Y sabes, estamos hablando de entrar en el mercado correcto, si se quiere. Entrar en las escuelas, entrar en los negocios de la comunidad que esa parte de la comunidad respalda, que esa parte de la comunidad frecuentan. Entrar en la literatura imprimida en español, para que las personas comiencen a usar eso. Y creo que una vez veamos más de eso, veremos que la palabra en la boca nos llevará un poco y veremos más llamadas telefónicas entrando. También tenemos una red de la violencia disponible. Que realmente es underutilizada. Necesitamos promover eso más. Alguien puede llamar y dejarnos un mensaje. Somebody can call in and leave us a message and to let us know. The nice thing about Crime Stoppers is somebody makes a report to the police department to identify where a wanted person is, they're going to get a reward for it. So it's a good thing and I, I think it's something we need to, to expand on, use more.
You know, Chief, going back to the, the meeting at Heritage School you mentioned earlier and tacking on with the mayor's name, I think Crime Stoppers can be a very, very effective tool, but, but what I think, and I, I don't know how, with the limited assets you have, how you promulgate what I'm going to say next, but watching the police officers talk to the audience that night and I think primarily Lieutenant Martinez, when the police officers were talking about, "We want your help, we need your help, we can be contacted anonymously, you don't have to give us your name and you can use Crime Stoppers, you can use the hotline." Watching the audience, watching the head shake, yes, I think, I think the message comes better from the police department. Because in, maybe in the community, sometimes the police are looked upon as an enemy or looked upon with suspicion, but I thought there was a very, very effective message delivered that night and I, I saw the people responding. And I don't know how you can continue to carry that message with the limited resources, but I think of the police officers, the patrol officers would say in a heart-to-heart fashion, "We need your help and here's the number, please, call us, it might work."
It's having that literature available that you can take out of your pocket and hand to somebody. Again, it's those relationships.
Do we still have Crime Stoppers in the schools? At one point, we expanded it into the schools and really tried to promote it. Is that still occurring?
I'm, I don't believe we're doing it as much as we, as we were. Our school resource officers are familiar with Crime Stoppers. Again, that's an area I believe we can do a better job in.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a delicate balance, I think, in the schools.
Yes.
You don't want people putting themselves in danger, but as, as you're, you know, highlighting, people can do it anonymously. And most of, I would think that most of the information you get isn't typically going to be from, from gang members. It's going to be from people who are on the, you know, sidelines who, who witnessed that. So I know that at one point, you know, there was a real emphasis in the schools. Maybe that's kind of, you know, fallen off, but I think the, just the comprehensive approach to getting people, you know, to share information, like you said, can be a valuable, a valuable tool for us to use. And hopefully, you know, we're going to have more people willing to, to get involved and give us the information that, that you guys need to, to be more effective.
Chief Collins, you know, by going through all the lessons and so forth, the really thing that really attracts me or having seen the gang injunction, I think parents can be responsible. I think that's a good idea, that's proactive. I, I like to see more information on gang injunctions. I also realize that it's going to be the school, the city, parents, the community and so forth. And I want, I, I like the emphasis to be more parental responsibility. That means teaching them, educating them. And if these gangs are, are, if you know them, then go to the parents, not, not only from the police station, but also from city council. Mary Sabantes, I know I've, I've worked with her before many years ago, and I like to emphasize that thrust in this program.
Thank you. And that's exactly what we need to be doing. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that more as we move through the presentation. I think we're very much on the same page. We also have to be adaptable, fast to respond. So when something happens, we've got to be able to put resources on it quickly and to be able to change our tactics and our strategies. I'll talk a little bit about innovation. We need to be thinking about other things too, technology-wise, perhaps surveillance cameras in certain locations. There's a lot of products on the market now that are very inexpensive compared to what they used to be, and they're very portable. So we can move things around in order to have a certain degree of surveillance cameras on a particular location. We also have some public service announcements that are going to be coming out, or the ability to, to reach the Spanish-speaking market. And that'd be another great venue to help get our message across. Again, it's, it's going to take a lot more than, than just going to a community meeting or going to a neighborhood watch meeting or, or a school meeting. It's a continued approach and it's got to be sustained. It's going to take a long time to deliver that message and to really get it to stick. Stronger collaboration with allied agencies, I kind of mentioned a little bit about that. There's always more that we can do, not just with the police department, but with, with law enforcement, but with other city departments. And Mr. Dutcher reached out to me from Parks and Rec and indicated their, their, their own issues that they experienced with gang members in Lodi, and, and they definitely want to support us and we want to support them. Delivering that stronger message, peddling the product, to use another's terms, but, you know, again, it's a continual approach. It's a message that's got to be delivered consistently and we can do a better job there. I'll talk a little bit in a moment about a, an opportunity we're going to have to participate in a regional gang task force and a grant application that, that we're waiting to hear on. On the intervention side, to really focus on the people that are already involved in the gang lifestyle, we already have our school resource officers, we already have a strong partnership with the school district. We need a, in my opinion, and I don't think I'm alone, we need a means of reaching out to people that are involved with gang activity and successfully being able to delure them away from it. And the one that, that I'm familiar with the most, because I've been involved with it for many years, but also because I know that it's evidence-based and it gets results, is Operation Peacekeeper. And Operation Peacekeeper was basically originated after a project called Ceasefire in Boston many years ago. It spilled over into other agencies, including Stockton and adapted. And since we do see so much spillover between the two cities, the two communities, Stockton and Lodi, and knowing that it's an evidence-based program that gets results, it only makes sense that we emulate what our neighbors are doing next door. And I'm really, really pleased that, that Mr. Womack was able to be here today as a resource for that. Call-ins.
Let me just stop you for a second before you go any further. Mr. Womack, every year budget time, we fight the battle about the school resource officers. And fortunately, the school district recognizes, you know, what a valuable resource that they are and the city certainly recognizes it. And I just feel very strongly that we have to keep that program going. You know, for those that aren't familiar with it, it's a great communication between the police department and the school district in regards to what the kids are doing and what they're involved in and establishing relationships, you know, with the kids. So we're getting, coming up on another budget year and, and I know we're all fighting, you know, difficult challenges, but I would hope that, that we're able to keep the school resource program in.
If it's gone, then we have the audacity to transport those folks either to county jail or to court in Stockton. So, I mean, I, I think the effects of losing that courtroom would be devastating and could be very significant to Lodi. And I certainly hope that that doesn't happen, but I, I am hearing discussion of that in the community, in the law enforcement community.
And I think we really need to be aggressive on that. It's one of those things where it's looked at, in my view, strictly from an economical standpoint, as opposed to all the collateral damage that can happen, you know, when they, when they compress the system, you know, and we might start with, you know, a letter expressing concerns, we might ask for, you know, some meetings with, with the policymakers, you know, in the county, but I, but I'm hearing the same thing. And, and I really feel like we've got to, we've got to start fighting that right now and, and expressing a, a, a strong concern that that not occurred. And again, what's frustrating is if they transfer it to the county, you know, what that means is it costs us more money because, you know, officers are having to spend more time in court, the travel time, the overtime, you know, the residual effect is, is pretty, you know, significant. So I would like to see us be really out in front of, of that issue and, and do everything we can, you know, to keep it. And I'm assuming that the only court that's open right now is the one in the police department?
Yes.
And, you know, they spent a lot of money to build that court and, and I just think we got to be really aggressive in fighting that.
So just a couple of things. We have been, to our advantage, the presiding judge is former mayor Warner, and we have that conversation occurring fairly routinely. I know that Dave's, probably his last decision that he'd want to make is removing that last court. He understands the importance here in Lodi. New Mexico and Kevin Benacosta went to Chile and I think one of our dispatchers went down. We haven't seen that type of response in the last several years. At that time, we used to pay for that. We haven't had people come forward to do that. We still do have the incentive to pay for Spanish speaking, but now the only aspect that we have to get Spanish speakers is to recruit officers. And when we go through the hiring process and the interview process, we look at those that are, that are bilingual. But, or those that are going to schools to learn Spanish, we haven't seen that desire lately.
Yeah. And when you, when you look at that issue, the programs you are talking about is a, is a total immersion.
Immersion program, domestic program in South America or Central America.
Because I know at one point, we were offering, we were hosting classes at the PD for Spanish-speaking classes.
That's going a ways back, yeah. We did, we did, we did have that. In fact, we even had some within-service training. And we came in, it was more Spanish for, for the officer just to get by and using it on the street, but to be fluent and, and receive the incentive pay. We haven't seen that lately, but maybe that's something that we can look at is having, you know, a bit of a, a training in, in the department as far as letting them get by.
Yeah, there's different options and, and I just think we need to do whatever we can to increase that because in a lot of your strategies here, you're talking about an issue of communication and, and the ability to communicate in that language is crucial. So, thank you.
Lieutenant Martinez, am I missing anything? Anything else to add?
Yeah, recently hired a police officer who's a lateral officer with about 16 years of experience and he speaks and is fluent in, in Spanish reading and writing, so definitely see the need. Shortage of jail beds, no, nothing new on that story. The jail is too small. There is money to, to expand the county jail, there is not money to operate an expanded county jail. You've probably heard about non-revocable parole. There have been changes to the parole system over, in the recent years, where basically it is people coming out of prison because prisons are downsizing. It is much more difficult in order to violate somebody on parole. It's, in a sense, these folks coming out of prison, many, in many cases, are not actually held accountable to parole. It gives us a search clause or they give up some of their rights in order to, to allow us to search them, but the days of being able to take an offender off the streets for a six-month or 12-month violation because of a technicality are pretty much gone. And that was a very effective tool for local law enforcement. Realignment. Realignment began about six months ago. You know, once again, the prison system is downsizing and realignment is the idea of taking those offenders, those lower-level offenders out of state prison, pushing them into the county jail system, and then the state providing financial resources to the counties, the sheriff's office, to the probation department, to service providers in order to, to deal with that population. What they're trying to do there is affect the recidivism rates because recidivism rate in California is about 70%. 70% of the offenders who come out of prison are back in within a three-year period. So realignment-
I'm sorry, but that's such a naive position of the state, that thinking that pushing it down, you've really touched the hot spot with me here. I, you know, thinking that they're going to push it down into the county jail system and that's going to have an impact on recidivism, recidivism is ludicrous. And, you know, we've got a council member here who used to be a member of the legislature and, you know, maybe he can give us some, some insight on how to, you know, get the state to realize the, the impact. And that's really, I think, one of our biggest challenges. We're having all these budget cuts and people are, you know, really fed up with government and they're fed up with what they pay in taxes, but what we're going to see here is the, the impact of those budget reductions and how it affects people's lives personally. And, you know, you're going to see that pendulum at some point swing back because it's going to have such an impact on, on, on the citizens of, of our communities. And it just boggles my mind that they're, you know, I, to me, it's strictly a dollar savings effort on the part of the state without really caring about the impact that it has on our local communities and counties, and it's really frustrating.
Let's just jump in briefly. We had the director of law enforcement for the state of California come and speak to the league of California cities about this exact issue so that the board of directors could try to get a sense of what this is going to look like in all of our communities. And quite frankly, you hit it on the nail. It's about dollars and cents. And from the perspective of not only the director of that department, but he's met with the governor several times and they still don't know what it's going to actually look like. So for them to come in front of us and say that, it, it just speaks to me that they really don't know what the outcome's going to be and it is all about dollars and cents, so.
I was in the legislature, and that's right, there's one group of people who say, "No", and another group of people say, "Just go ahead and bring it to the court, because it's going to save money." I was the other side, which we didn't want the alignment. I'm staying there.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's definitely more to come on that. Again, that's only been in place for about six months now. I do know that the, the sheriff's office has been impacted much more severely with state-level offenders than they had anticipated. So we'll see more out of that. What that means to us and what we're seeing in the community is the increased number of parolees. We're seeing probably more problematic is we're seeing a different attitude among those individuals because they know that that violation is not hanging over their heads anymore. They know that they're not going to, because they've got a, they've got some drug paraphernalia on them, that they're not going to go back to prison for six or 12 months. So things are changing and we're trying to find ways to deal with that. I will say that I think if there's any probation department in the state that is, has got a handle on this thing in San Joaquin County, under leadership of Chief Patty Mazelli, unfortunately Patty's going to retire in a, next week, but our probation department is on the forefront of this thing. They, we are, we are, our county is quite far ahead of other counties as far as making this work. And if it's got a prayer to work, it'll be our probation department that'll be able to do that. And I've got a lot of confidence in them to help mitigate the effects of this. Reclassification of criminal laws. We're seeing a number of movements in the legislature where crimes are being downgraded. It should really say declassification of criminal laws. Felonies are being changed to misdemeanors. Again, it's, it's going to be harder to put people in jail or in prison and unfortunately, some of those are going to be cases where there are people who truly need to be in jail or in prison. And I, I don't think we've seen the, the effect of that yet. And then finally catching up, we, there's some other communities I've mentioned before. We've got some catching up to do as far as how we do business, as far as gang crime and some other issues that we deal with. As far as technology, we have a greater need for civilianization in our police department so that we can take our sworn resources and devote them to other things and basically taking a look at how we do business as far as being able to police the city of Lodi, not just from the gang perspective, but from, from an entire policing perspective. I mentioned a task force and, you know, this is an opportunity that's, that's going to be coming our way very soon. Due to gang issues and very much a lot of the issues that we're discussing today, Stockton Police and San Joaquin County Sheriff's Department are in the process of forming a countywide gang task force. gang task force. This should be a collaboration of our local, state, federal agencies, FBI, ATF, probation, parole, the DA, United States Attorney, and more. The plan is basically agencies will have an option of engaging in full-time participation, meaning we would assign somebody to the task force, or part-time. Our, our assignment would basically be part-time. The focus, and this has nothing to do with intervention or prevention, this is all about apprehending people and prosecuting them. The focus is on enforcement, investigation and intelligence, and relentless prosecution. And the fact that, the, the thought behind the prosecution, as I've spoken with District Attorney Willett a couple of times about prosecution, is that, you know, while, while his office has been devastated by budget cuts as well, he's lost a number of deputy district attorneys who prosecute cases, he's lost a number of investigators who do preparation for cases to go to trial. When it comes to certain offenders, like gang offenders, the district attorney's office recognizes that there are times when they have to, you know, pull out the stops, and they're gonna have to, to hold people accountable, and they'll do everything they can to put people in prison who need to be there. So, and we've seen that already in the cases that we've investigated. When we need a little bit of help, somebody needs a little bit more attention than they do through the normal circles, circles, we're able to, to interact with the district attorney's office and get results as far as prosecution goes. We're very grateful for that. I, I believe the, the documents as far as a use agreement or a memorandum of understanding for this task force are circulating between Stockton PD and the sheriff's office right now, and I'm very anxious to participate in this. This would give us access to a lot of different resources that we really don't have right now, and I think we really stand to get a lot out of participating in the task force.
You know, I, I have some mixed feelings about that. I, I agree that, you know, you've got a lot of resources there that we normally wouldn't have access to. But when I think back on some of the different task forces that occurred when I was the chief, the narcotics, the, you know, the auto theft, it just seemed like we spent most of our time in Stockton and the county versus dealing with, you know, direct Lodi issues. So if we enter into a, a MOU here, I think we really have to, you know, be strong on that point, that we really wanna see efforts, you know, in our community as well as the other communities. And sometimes we get swallowed up by the, by Stockton.
Well said, and very much a concern. Typically, in a task force-type environment, participants typically get out of it what they, or should get out of it, what they put into it. So if we have a part-time relationship with it, we can expect part-time results. If we have a full-time relationship with the task force, we could expect more. At least with a part-time relationship with it, we, we would have people directly associated with this group, and I think the, we would see a really strong increase in the amount of information that's flowing, and, and really, you know, a resource for our people to learn from, and for, for other agencies to learn from our people, too. I think what, Councilmember Hanson, what you're just, what you're mentioning is really a management issue, and it would be my responsibility to make sure that we get our share. And I'm very confident to say that I've got very strong relationships with both the sheriff, the Stockton Police Chief, the district attorney. I, I certainly would be something that's on the radar to be concerned about, and again, I think it's a management issue, and definitely something to consider, but I know we can overcome that. I wanna tell you about a grant proposal. Was really hoping to be able to come to you today and deliver some good news about a grant opportunity. Unfortunately, we have not heard yet about our application. This is basically, this is probably the best option we have as far as getting a grant in Lodi. It's through the California Emergency Management Agency. It's called the California Gang Reduction Intervention Program, otherwise known as CalGrip. This grant exists in a number of communities already. For the current year, statewide, there's $8.2 million available from state restitution funding, and agencies that apply have an opportunity to get a maximum of $250,000. It's a two, it's a two-year grant. While this is certainly no means a solution to all of our problems, I, I do believe it would be a catalyst to really get things, you know, bring things, bring the community together and get us off in the right, get us going in the right direction. We applied for the grant back in December. We were supposed to hear from, from Calima at the end of February, we're still waiting. Yet, I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic that, that we'll see, we'll be awarded this grant. I think we put a very, very strong package together. For one, thanks to, to Mr. Hood for, for coming up and helping us with that. In essence, what we formulated our grant application from is really what our greatest needs are. Our greatest needs right now are for additional enforcement in the gang arena. So we've asked for $150,000 for additional enforcement. We also have a need for code enforcement, we asked for $50,000 to do additional code enforcement. There's also a $50,000 mandatory pass-through that has to go to community-based organizations as part of the grant, for a total of 250. There is a match requirement, it can be either in cash, or in-kind, or a combination. We came to the table in our application with an $85,000, the concept of an $85,000 cash match to employ two part-time youth outreach workers over the two-year period. The idea there is that we would have a part-time youth outreach worker to deal with the Norteno side, and another one to deal with the Cerano side. And, and I believe that, you know, coming in with a strong proposal of a cash match is pretty compelling in order to get Calima to grant our grant request. And then another $165,000 in in-kind services, basically meaning the work that we're already doing, we can get credit for, and we certainly spend more than that. The CalGrip would basically be a collaboration between a lot of agencies we already work with, and we can get a better partnership with. One of the nice things about it, depending on how you look at it, is that this grant requires us to put together a community panel that's represented by public and private agencies, and nonprofit agencies, to come together and really get to, to the crux of what we need to do to deal with gang issues. And these are just some of the partners that we would include in our, in our panel. That concludes the presentation, and I wanna thank you for your attention, and we are very happy to take your questions.
Chief, let me put, put the gang issue, if you can, into a perspective in the overall crime issue within the community. You know, we've heard over a period of years that Part 1 crimes, which encompasses a lot of different things, have sort of gone up or down, whatever the case may be. Where in the pie, or how big a piece of the pie, is the gang issue currently?
I, I think it's significant. As far as Part 1 crimes goes, our aggravated assaults are up, and, and part of what's driving that is, is gang crime. We're seeing, we're seeing shootings, we're seeing incidents that happen with greater frequency, but we're also seeing, part of the more disturbing thing that I really didn't cover very much, is that we're seeing these things happening on school grounds, or near school grounds. We're seeing them happening during the week at 3:00 in the afternoon. One of our murders happened shortly after 3:00 PM on a school day. So we're seeing, you know, this isn't something that's happening under cover of darkness, it's happening in the middle of the day. We had one shooting that happened, a person shooting into a moving vehicle at 9:00 on a Saturday morning. So we're seeing, I think the intensity and the level of violence that we're seeing is really aggravated from what it once was. And it's kind of demonstrated when we look at, at the frequency of crimes involving guns, we're, we're seeing more of it, and, and so I do think it's a, it's a significant factor.
Let, let me interrupt. Does that, does that beg the question, then, and I know this will set off a bottle rocket in other parts of the community, but, you know, if, if this is such a cancer, and I, and I believe it is, with the limited resources you have, I mean, and, you know, if you look at your, if you look at your, your map, this issue is on the east side of town, unfortunately. I mean, does that give you the luxury to, to say to, you know, "We're gonna overload our patrol to this area," or "We're gonna overload our assets to this problem," obviously to the detriment of other parts of town, and obviously to the detriment, we'll say, of, you know, walk-by burglaries from your garage, or something like that? I mean, does that make sense, and can you get away with that? Maybe it's an unfair question, you don't wanna answer publicly, but I mean-
It's a lot of answer.
Yeah.
You know, again, I, I touched on balance. Yeah, we have, we have a, you know, if you look at 249 or 250 validated gang members, that's, that's about four tenths of 1%. Now, we know that, we know that there are more people involved with gang activity, we just haven't been able to validate them yet, or to document them as, as gang members. I, I see a situation that, you know, quite frankly, I wanna get in front of this as best we can right now, so that it doesn't spill over, so that we don't have a shooting on the steps of the theater, so that we don't have a shooting in, in front of one of our shopping centers, or one of our malls, so that we don't have a major incident occur on the school campus. I, I do wanna get in front of this as best we can. Again, we're talking about a small portion of the, of the community. The idea of going in and saturating a neighborhood with the police, with a zero-tolerance approach, I mean, that's one tactic that, that we can get good results off of. There's also externalities from that tactic that are negative, in the sense that when, when agencies typically do that, and other communities will, will tell us this, when you typically do that, you alienate the community, because other people get caught up in the zero-tolerance enforcement. And sometimes you get, you catch people in that web that are not your target audience, and that's something we need to be very careful of. That's why we really wanna advocate a more surgical approach. At the same time, how do I balance resources so that, you know, if you live in, in Parkwest or Sunwest or Rivergate, and somebody's breaking into your garage while you're sleeping, we need to be able to handle that, too. So, you know, again, we're, we're doing, I, I think, a very, very good job with the resources we have. Could we use more? Of course. But we wanna try to work smarter with what we have. Again, with more of that surgical approach, more of a focused approach, instead of just throwing resources and throwing cars into a neighborhood, really figuring out who is causing the problems, and then that's the people that we address. If, if that answers your question, Councilmember.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Johnson, your comment about a balance, because it is, it is a balance. And I think where, where it tipped was back in the late, I wanna say, 80s, early 90s, when there was no balance, and the east side really was ignored to a great deal. Groups like the East Side Improvement Committee stepped up, and groups like the Gang Alternative Project stepped up, to try to bring a sense of balance back to the city of Lodi. There was a, a deep dividing line between the east side and the west side, and quite frankly, the east side went to hell in a handbag. And we're now dealing with the repercussions of that. So unfortunately, there's gonna be an unbalance in resources for a while until we get a handle on what's happening on the east side again, and get it cleaned up, because we ignored it, and I, and I mean as a city, for 20 years, and it cannot be fixed overnight, and we, we know that as a community. We've got infrastructure problems, we have lighting issues, garbage, the, the housing stock is poor. I mean, all of that creates an environment for this gang activity to occur, and for crime to increase. And, you know, we, we've sat back and put our resources in new neighborhoods, and kind of ignored the old ones, and now we've got this nice little incubator that was just created for what's occurring now. So I think for a while, there is not gonna be a balance, and we're gonna have to shift additional resources to areas that unfortunately were ignored for a long time. Not directly from your department, from, but from the city as a whole, and not reinvest it back into that part of town, and these are the results. So I feel very strongly about that. I hope you agree.
One of the slides, I, I skipped over one of the things called CompStat, which is basically the idea of bringing the department-level, the commanders together along with patrol officers and investigators, talking about crime problems, prioritizing our responses, coming up with strategies to deal with crime, whether it's gang crime, property crime, nuisance issues and so forth, and being able to come up with departmentally as a plan to address and respond to those, to those items. I certainly see a need for, for a model like that here in Lodi. We do devote a significant amount of police resources to the east side. We are, we have a constant presence in the east side, and we have been since I've been here, and I'm sure longer before that. But again, it's that balance. If we have something that, that picks up in another neighborhood, we may have to reallocate our resources to go deal with that. And that's, again, that's just, that's a balancing act that we do. It's the economics of policing, if you will. It's how do we allocate our resources to the areas effectively as we can. I mentioned civilianization. We do have opportunities in, in the future. I really hope to move this department in, in a way that we can take our sworn officers and put them in, in a role dealing more with crime issues, instead of, for example, bringing a police car off the streets from Kettelman and Hamm to come to the office to sign off the traffic citation, which is a service we provide to the community, we have for, for many years. And I think we can still provide those services, but I think we can find ways to do it better and more efficiently, and then make better use of, of tax dollars in order to, to address crime and other issues in Lodi. So those are the things that we'll be looking at in the future.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with some of what you just said, but from my perspective, in terms of law enforcement, I feel like, and I can go back a long ways, that we've always, you know, put a lot of emphasis on, on the east side in terms of resources and trying to deal with it. And, and Chief, I absolutely agree. You have to be fluid, 'cause I remember when I was chief, and we, we did kind of a operation all-out, where we took officers in the neighborhoods, got them out of the patrol cars, walking in those neighborhoods, talking to people. And one of the backlashes that we experienced was people on the west side saying, "What about us?" You know, so you do have to strike a balance, and you do have to be fluid in terms of, of, you know, allocating your resources. But the bottom line is that the majority of the problems that you're dealing with is on the east side. You showed us a map, and there are crimes that occurred on the west side that are gang-related, but, you know, the percentage of it, the highest percentage of it, is on the east side, and that's where I know you're putting your, your focus.
Well, I, I thank you for bringing that up, and, and I do agree that the resources have been pointed to the east side for a long time. But it's not just, I mean, from my perspective, it's the police department is being reactive, and we need to be proactive. And the proactive comes in many forms, from good lighting, to clean streets, to decent housing stock, to just a variety of things, that, that that's where I think we, as a community, have rather ignored the east side. And I think Mr. Barton might agree, our infrastructure is, is poor. There's just so many things that have gotten away with us over the years. But one of the things I would like to see if we could bring back at a future council meeting, is a discussion about creating a gang alternative program, so that we can get members of the community from a variety of different perspectives, maybe even including that helping hands, which I know we have some in the audience, so we can garner support from the community from a lot of different directions. And if there are no other questions from council, I'll turn to-
I have one final question, if I might. Going back to the, the grant proposal, Chief, it's a two-year grant, and you're talking about $150,000 for special enforcement, or $50,000 for additional code enforcement. Do we wind up into the, you know, being, being squeezed two years down the road where we don't have the monies to, to renew this, or retain presumably personnel, you know, if and when the grant runs out, and if and when the economy doesn't turn around?
I'm glad you asked the question, Councilmember Johnson. $150,000 is essentially, you know, split into two years, something- $150,000 is essentially, you know, split into two years, $75,000 each. That does not hire new police officers, that does not add to our staff. That is a means of basically assembling, I think the next step for us to be truly proactive, we need some kind of a street crimes team. We need a proactive team that isn't responsible for calls for service, that isn't responsible to listen to the radio and to sign off traffic tickets and stuff. This is the proactive group that initiates contact in the community, and this would be essentially to put together a part-time version of that. We would identify some officers, we would be good in that role, and on a part-time basis, we would pull them out of their assignments, whether they're in patrol or investigations. We would backfill them on overtime, and that's what we would use the grant money for.
Glad I asked the question, I'm very happy with your answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that $150,000 is all for overtime?
Yes.
Thank you. Would anyone from the audience like to make a comment? And if so, please come to the podium. Mr. Miller.
My antenna went up when the sergeant mentioned that the source of the firearms was household burglaries. I'm just wondering how many legal firearms owners know this, to begin with? And number two, the state program for safety and all that is very much pointed towards keeping firearms away from children. But what can a legal firearms owner do to keep the gun less susceptible to theft? I mean, should you disassemble it, hide the parts all over the house, or how is the best done?
Great question. Would someone like to...
I'll take that one. Simple, get a safe. Get a safe that somebody can't pick up and walk out of your house. Get a quality safe to secure your firearms. And I can't tell you how many times we see reports from all over town, it doesn't matter what town you're in, people get burglarized, either their home or their car, and they have firearms that are stolen. And once they're gone, you can rest assured, they're going to be used in a crime. So the best way absolutely to do that, you know, take $1,000, $1,500 and invest in a safe.
Thank you. Mr. Cheney?
JP, did you have something to add?
Well, just, in addition to the safe, gun locks also, much less impact on your wallet when you get a gun lock. You guys agree with this?
Good morning, Doug. 520 Louis Avenue. I just had a couple comments to make. I think working with Ralph Womack and kind of getting involved in this in 2008, and just kind of still keeping an eye on it, and see how it's finally picked up here with Chief Elms, and I see that the interest is really great, and it just makes my heart warm. One thing that hasn't been mentioned in this whole issue is the drug problem here in Lodi. Meth and lactar heroin seem to be pretty rampant here, so that's, you know, got a lot to do with, I would say, most, more with like the crimes of burglary and things like this, you know, people that don't have a job and need to support their habits. And we really need to figure out how to reach out to the Latino and Pakistani community. That's the number-one problem here that I've seen since I got involved with this thing. That's the only two comments I have to make. I just wanted to thank Ralph Womack. I've worked with him, and he's a sharp guy. And Chief Elms for coming into town. I have a lot of faith and trust in them, and if they can't do it, nobody can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dave Towne, I live on the east side. I'd like to thank all of you, police officers, number one, because I do live on the east side. As a matter of fact, when either your phones ring, or you get an email from my wife, which is almost on a daily basis, and you do respond, I feel, I don't know if I'm just venting, I'm upset with the state, because I do know that by downsizing prisons, it does have a large impact on our counties, jails, which has an impact on nobody going back. For your comment with drugs, I happen to live right across the street from an alley. My wife has a camera going pretty much the time when she's home. There's thefts every night from the alley across from my home. I'm also putting up a video camera, I don't know if that's going to do any good. One of the main problems, I think we have to expand it, parents, is that they're scared of their own children. Their, you know, their children are gang-related. I've talked with a few other of the top gang that have been in there forever, they don't even know the new people coming in anymore. They have no idea. They're flabbergasted, that, you know, "You're not supposed to do this in our area, this is our area, you can't do..." But they are. But I just wanted to say thank you to all of you officers that are in charge of going out and helping keep us safe. Thank you.
Appreciate that comment, and I echo it. You know, living on the east side, I probably call the police department more than most, and they always respond, and I'm grateful, as well as all the neighbors that I speak to. So thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, sir, please come to the podium.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Mi nombre es Dan Cortez. Soy mexicano. Anyway, it's very interesting what you're talking about here. I was hoping to see more Hispanics or more Latino here, I see a few, and that's very nice. We all know we have a problem, but also we need to go deep into the problem, and that is come into my community, come into what we know. You know, I know what it is to be a cholo, I know what it is to be a gang member, but I also know what it is to have a chance and an opportunity to change your life. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of mentors, we don't have a lot of hope, and I see that every day. I used to live on the east side, and you know, when I was a little kid, one day I say, "I'm going to cross the tracks, and I'm going to move to the west side." And I did. But just because I did doesn't mean I forget what happens on the east side, I still have family over there. I know a lot of people that are losing their homes, kids are not respecting their parents anymore. I had three kids myself. And yes, I'm afraid to speak right now, nervous like anybody else, but if I don't do it, who's going to do it? You know, I know it's not the police responsibility to do what they're doing, it's us as parents. But sometimes, we don't know how. We are in a country that spent millions of dollars helping everybody else in another country, and then they forget the people who is here at home. I'm here, I need help, my community needs help. So who do I go to? Do I going to call Crime Stoppers? If I didn't speak the language, probably I wouldn't call. Anyway, so on my research, I find out that 30% of the children today have no father active in their lives. The parents are leaving, especially in our community. The divorce rate has doubled since 1970. Even in the Hispanic community, it's happening now. In the old days, you used to respect your mom. Whatever mom say, we did. But today, my mom and everybody else's moms has to work, and that is not around. So I can dress up like a gang member and talk to the familia, mi gente, mi pueblo, and they will listen. All they want is a chance, you know? We are more than happy to see somebody succeed in our community. We don't want to bring it down anymore. I had a chance to change, but someone reached out to me and gave me a chance. I belong to a good church, I believe we need to go back to the basics and start bringing the family together. What happened to the family of Angelico Sorio is a tragedy. No parent wants to go through that. But also in the last month, we also lost Eric Lopez, and last year, Pedro Mesa. So my question to you is how many more Latinos and Hispanics need to die? I know you guys are doing your best, I know Mark Helen is doing an awesome job, and they're trying to reach out, but the communicational language is a barrier. You need to reach out to people who knows the community, who speak the language. I'm here willing to help, to do whatever it takes, because I have three kids myself, and if I don't invest my time on my kids, I know how they can end up, and I don't want them to be dead. So everybody's trying to do their best, I know that. I'm trying very hard, and even though I'm shaking a little bit, I can see the people that are here are the ones who want to make the difference. But you look a lot like Caucasians. So we need to get a few more Latinos, Hispanics involved in this. And believe me, if we do that, you can see the difference, you can see the change. East side is not another community, it's part of Lodi. So one of my things that I want to do is, with my church, start working on a project where we start going back to the values of praying, values that God can help us, and that we're not alone, that there's people that care. And that's one of the reasons I'm here, because I know you're here. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. And we really hope that, I really hope that when we, if we get this gang alternative project together, that you will step up and join them.
I'm more than happy.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Tony Amador, and first I want to compliment the chief. I think you have a great balanced approach to what challenges are in front of you. And I offer my assistance to the things that you want to do on the east side, and I agree with you, there probably ought to be more Latinos here than are in the audience, it's a very important issue. And I think that, I want to address just a couple of things. Mayor, one of the things that police departments have the challenge of is they have to be reactive. Sometimes it's almost a luxury to be able to be proactive, and it's all boils down to funding. And I think one of the things, Chief Hanson, that really grates me, is that attitude of the state in saving money, that they have an approach of dealing with things in proportionality instead of functionality, and understand the importance of law enforcement. And we had recently, in Galt, a lot of you recall, the so-called non-violent offender who attacked a police officer, and who responded was the Sacramento County Sheriff, they got there before Galt PD. The guy had a hammer, and so he ended up getting shot because he went after the sheriff. But what's worse than that, what's more tragic, is the commissioner released him back in the community, this non-violent offender, because he had a wound. And so it took the parole agents to raise hell and go all the way up to the top, because the government doesn't want to admit that some of these so-called non-violent offenders are pretty violent. And so that irks a lot of the citizens too, so you have a lot of companies that share your thoughts on that issue. One of the things that I think might be important, Chief, and that I would offer to you, there's a lot of community-based organizations that really don't have a handle on how they can help and do something, but there's a lot of people that are concerned and would help. And I was thinking about your bilingual programs and things like that, that you might have assistance. I happen to be on the board of directors of the Mexican-American Lions Club, and I thought it was unique that you'd have a Mexican-American Lions Club instead of just the Lions Club. And so I joined, and they have a little bit of money, as you know, they got involved in the fireworks thing, but there's certain things that I think if you brought a project to them, or you could come to them in some way to help maybe train or participate in bilingual education, or even conversational Spanish with the police officers, that would help them. I'm involved at the Rotary Club too, and there's three Rotary Clubs, there's two Lions Clubs. There's a lot of service organizations that feel that it's the whole city's challenge, not just the east side. And if you could get them involved besides the churches, I think we would make some headway. And since I've been here, I like the approach of the police department, because you can't just have containment and treat it as the east side. And one Latino friend of mine said, "Cruzamos la frontera, we crossed the border, we went to the west side." And if the residents themselves feel like that's what it is, east and west, then we've got to change that, those of us who are in leadership positions. And I think it can be done, and I guess the bottom line here, Chief, is I think you're doing a great job in the short time you've been here. I like that approach, and I'm very, I look at it with a very critical eye from my past experiences in that, and I think you're on the right track. Obviously, I'm not trying to get out of a ticket here or anything, so you know that my comments are pretty candid. And so I just wanted to tell the council, you're all doing a great job, everyone's trying to do their part, everybody has an opinion and idea, but I think it's going to take the community-based organizations to get more involved, and the Latino community. We've got to find who those leaders are in the community and go to them, whether it's the businesses or whoever it happens to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate your comment. You know, I hear what you're saying in regards to trying to eliminate the perception of east side, west side. I was born in Lodi in 1961, and for my entire life, it's always been, I was from the other side of the tracks, always. Moved away for a while, and it didn't get any better when I came back. In fact, I got to work with the Lodi East Side Improvement Committee. Well, during that time, we really tried to change the perception of east side, west side, and we changed to Lodi Improvement Committee, so there was no longer a separation between east side, west side. I think that it's embedded in the community, and it's a way of thinking, and it's going to take a long time for us to change the perception of separation. And it's going to start with the people who live on the east side, it really will. And I'm not going to try to get to the other side of the tracks, because I actually love the east side. And we sat here and we talked a lot about how horrible it is with the gangs and the crime and the drugs, but you know what? I still love to sit on my porch, even though I had a gang shooting across the street from my house and one block down. And I still love sitting there and watching the families walk by and engaging those young people that are walking by, and I appreciate it. And, you know, the east side comes to life a lot, a lot better than some people would imagine. So I am pleased to live there and will continue to do so. If there are no other comments, I appreciate everybody coming out this morning, meeting adjourned.